The Atlantic Crossing abandonment. Giving up prop- city property should not be an easy thing to do. However, I don't believe that the planning and zoning has had the opportunity, and they would be the first, am I correct, if we were just to allow the waiver for the application to proceed, even though eventually you may not agree to go through it, we would be able to see a little bit more of what-
They would submit a request for abandonment.
I'm sorry?
You wouldn't see any more of the pretty stuff. You would just be talking about an abandonment of a road. That's what-
But it's not final tonight. We're just saying-
No. It would be if we chose not to go forward.
Correct.
Okay. Okay. Thank you.
Vice Mayor?
Sure. Thank you. Cynthia, why'd you sit down?
She's tired.
Long night.
Long day.
And a long night. As some of my colleagues have stated, this is very difficult. Now, going to- I'm gonna bring this up later, but it's hard making these decisions, and I'm not picking on anyone, when we see the presentations for the first time during presentations. Be great if we could have, you know, and prior by both the applicant and city, prior, so we could ask any questions prior to the meeting, get more information. So, Cynthia, based on your presentation, strip of land is worth about 2 million?
I didn't present a dollar amount for the 18,000 square feet of right-of-way.
Neil, you're- I saw it from somebody.
That was Mr. Scheller.
2.7 million.
Who's Mr. Scheller?
Yes, we estimated each square foot is $100 based on comparables and development potential of the land.
Thank you, because I didn't get your presentation either.
Touche.
So, it sounds- and the gentleman, I thought, brought up a good point. It sounds like we're getting six workforce housing units for 2 million if we go forward in this. I mean, that's, you know-
I think I'm- sorry. Sorry, Vice Mayor.
Is that not something we should consider?
No. And I don't think you should be considering that, because right now, there's no project that's before you. Those are promises that they're not really held to at this point in time. All that's before you is whether or not they can submit an application.
A road.
So, I really would caution you in entertaining that as a basis for your decision today, because there's nothing to bind the applicant to that.
And I appreciate that guidance.
So, what I would say, though, is that 18,600 square feet of property in the central business district that is in the railroad corridor sub-district has an FAR of three. So, it turns into 55,800 square feet of something. Could be commercial, could be office, could be retail. If it's residential, based on the density for the 18,000, it turns into potentially 29 units. Based on the zoning requirements, those 29 units would have to have a minimum of six units as workforce. But that's out of what any strip of 18,600 square feet in that district would yield. And there is no guarantee that they will be residential or commercial or whatever. There never is until it's built and seen.
I'm gonna go to what you did give us in plenty of time, which is the memo. And in the second paragraph, you go to LDR section 4.4.13-J1C, in which everyone has been talking about, "Streets and alleys may not be abandoned, vacated, or closed to accommodate new development."
That's the waiver.
And the trouble I'm having is, you know, it's a great local developer and with a great local team, I don't know if it meets that burden. While I think it's good for others to also look at it like others have stated, I don't know if it meets that burden, at least now, but maybe somebody can convince me otherwise.
My sure- I mean, but Deputy Vice Mayor?
It seems, I feel like the road has a public purpose, and I'd be concerned about abandoning it, honestly. And I do think it erodes the street network. You know, we don't know what that is in the future, because we're giving it away, abandoning it, versus, you know, and they do have to beautify the road regardless. So, I'm very concerned about this, and I feel if we think we're not going forward, we should vote no tonight, because I do know that our, you know, our staff is really backed up, and we shouldn't have them spending time, and we shouldn't have the applicant spending time if we don't think. I'm really- the presentation, I'm not really inclined, I'm sorry, to go forth with this. I think a couple of slides back, you- there was- I can't move the slides, but at any rate, yes. Thank you.
All right, and yes, go right ahead.
I think the consideration of whether or not our staff is going to be impacted by this, it's really difficult. We're being shown something that could happen, but there's no guarantee it will happen. And in the meantime, we've utilized valuable staff time, and we all understand and appreciate that they don't have that free leeway to just consider something that may or may not happen. So, it makes it very difficult. I get, on the one hand, appreciate that the applicant is going to gain something, and what is the city gonna gain in exchange? We have no way of knowing. If we were talking about what is gonna be promised, what we're going to get, what he's going to get, we can't talk about it. So, this makes it a very difficult decision, and one not lightly taken, on the one hand, on the other. So, it's hard for me to want to go forward.
Okay, well, I find it a little bit easier. I just think that we follow our rules. I think that, you know, Vice Mayor basically said it best. Basically, it says in our rules, we are not to abandon streets and roads. And I also have an issue with it being a special privilege. I think that that's something that we're gonna open up a fairly large can of worms, potentially, because if we do it here, we're gonna have to be asked to do it else- we're gonna be asked to be doing it elsewhere as well. So, I'm not interested in watering down what we have in front of us. And I would just ask you to just take into consideration, right now, 7th, right in between where, you know, the construction is ongoing. For years, 7th's been closed down at Atlantic Crossing. We don't have any control over that. We will not have control over this property as well, because once you abandon it, you no longer can tell them how long they're allowed to keep the road closed. They can close it down for whatever purpose, if they're having a festival or whatever. That is gonna be up to them, because we have abandoned that road. That's the way it works. So, you have to think about that from a perspective across this whole town and treat it fairly. So, I- it won't have my support.
Okay. Well, I think it's like we're all comfortable going with staff recommendation. Cynthia, I appreciate that always, any staff recommendation, and you came strong today and in our conversations prior to this. So, motion to deny resolution number 74-22.
Second.
The rule, please.
Mr. Frinkle?
Luckily, yes.
Ms. Cassell?
Yes.
Mr. Bolston?
Yes.
Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
Mia Petolia?
Yes, thank you. All right, moving on to regular agenda item 7B, also a quasi-judicial hearing, which I've already read the rules, into the record. If there is anybody that is here to speak to resolution number 89-22 that has not been sworn in, please let us know. And it looks like there is nobody that's raising their hand, so we can proceed. Disclosure for ex parte communication to the commission. This is the Chick-fil-A issue, so let's go down from Commissioner Bolston, any disclosure? Any disclosure?
I spoke to Bunny Miss Cole about it and the server.
All right, very good. Vice Mayor, Deputy Vice Mayor?
I don't believe that I've had any.
And I haven't had any either, unless there's anything that's come through the city server. So, at this point in time, let's go ahead and have the project file entered into the record.
Good evening, Cynthia Geniotis, Development Services Director. I'd like to enter file 2022-R36 into the record, and I was gonna say Christina, and then I got flustered. Bolson's here.
Hi, good evening, for the record, Christina Valenki, here representing Chick-fil-A this evening. It's a pleasure to be here, and I very much appreciate how early your meetings start, because I give you credit for sitting here and listening and being very active in all of the discussions that happen, and still being able to do so, item after item. So, I will try and make this brief. Everybody is familiar with the existing Chick-fil-A. It's located on the southwest corner of Linton Boulevard and Federal Highway. The property is only about 0.82 acres. There are two access points that serve the property. The access off Federal is a right-in, right-out only, and there is an access on Linton. It's through the bank property, and there's shared access throughout the two sites. Over the last few years, obviously, Chick-fil-A has gotten more and more successful, and so that has created issues with their drive-through circulation, with their stacking, and during peak hours, stacking does go back onto Federal Highway. Chick-fil-A has heard concerns from the city, from customers, and they themselves recognize the issue and are here with a proposed solution to help alleviate that issue. So, again, the existing configuration for the site is on your screen. There is a two-way access, two-way access circulation throughout the site currently, so that vehicles can essentially travel in either direction. You can access the drive-through from Federal Highway. You can kind of go north and then right into the drive-through facilities. And also, when you're coming in from Linton, you can drive east, make kind of a tight U-turn movement. I've made that turn many times myself, and then access the driveway or the drive-through in that area as well. What we are proposing to do is essentially change the circulation throughout the site in order to increase the drive-through stacking area, make the drive-through more efficient, and then accommodate the stacking onsite. So, essentially, rather than the two-way circulation throughout the property that exists today, when you're accessing the site from either access point, you're gonna be circulating in a counterclockwise manner. So, when you're accessing from Federal Highway, you start at the orange star, and you essentially follow the red line on the screen. It goes north, and then again, in kind of that counterclockwise fashion, before you get to the drive-through. So, you can no longer come from Federal Highway and go right into the drive-through. You actually have to make that circular loop around the building first, and then enter the drive-through stacking lanes and make another loop, essentially. And so, what this does is it increases the queuing in the drive-through from 18 vehicles to 24 vehicles. And then, essentially, in the extreme peak hours, where, you know, in 5% of the time that might be more than 24 vehicles, those additional vehicles are actually stacked onsite, again, where that red line is. So, there's plenty of additional room before any vehicle would potentially even come into conflict with the right-of-way. This also creates a dual-drive-through system. Currently, it's more of a traditional drive-through that this particular Chick-fil-A has. It's an older style. There are some dual-lane areas, but they're very short and minor. So, this expands that dual-lane system, which allows Chick-fil-A to take orders and process them more efficiently. They can approach the cars earlier on, and Chick-fil-A's drive-through model is essentially to, from the point a customer makes their order to when they pick up their food, that timing is intended to be 45 seconds. So, in doing so, they're actually able to process 80 cars each hour through the drive-through. And with the older models, they aren't able to do so as quickly, because they don't have those efficiencies. So, by, again, creating this dual-stacking drive-through system, they're able to process those cars more quickly. What they are also doing with this site is instead of the drive-through window that exists today, they are putting in a delivery door. And this is something that is also seen at many Chick-fil-A's that are kind of that newer model, where their employees actually come out of the restaurant itself through the door, and they bring the orders to the vehicles. That way, if the vehicle at the window per se is waiting for an item, employees can go to the next car, and the next car deliver those orders, and those vehicles can exit through the bypass lane, so that they aren't stuck and there's no bottleneck there. They are also implementing CCTVs to associate orders with car tags, again, to improve efficiencies. And so, in order to do so, we are seeking a waiver this evening to allow a minimum 9.9 foot special landscape setback in lieu of 20 feet required. And so, the area highlighted in green is the area that we are discussing for purposes of the waiver. And so, existing right now, there's a 21-foot, 21.5-foot landscape area, and again, we're proposing to go down to 9.9 feet. And this is essentially to accommodate that new circulation pattern, going from the two-way circulation to the one-way circulation. We had to angle the parking spaces to do so. Again, the drive-through area is being slightly expanded, and, again, it's essentially the parking field there. There are 24 parking spaces existing, 24 are being proposed, so we're not proposing any more or less parking. But again, due to the configuration changes to accommodate the additional stacking onsite, we are requesting this waiver. And so, we did perform a queuing analysis as part of this, just to ensure that we are able to accommodate all of the necessary vehicles onsite through these changes to the circulation. So, again, processing 80 orders at peak times per hour results in a need for approximately 20 queuing spaces. Again, we're providing 24, which 95% of the time will be more than sufficient to accommodate that peak demand. And again, in the odd 5% of the time where there might be an additional car or two, that can be stacked onsite through this revised plan. As an additional contingency, we do have parking spaces essentially by that order window, where employees, if there is an item that is taking a little bit longer, employees can direct those cars to park in those spaces to await their order, again, so that it's not causing congestion and backup. And so, here you have our proposed landscape plan, and I believe the next slide actually zooms in, so yes, I'll go over to that. And essentially, we are still proposing to have all of the required landscaping within the reduced buffer. Currently, there is landscaping out there, and then there's a fairly large sod area as well, so there's not, it's not 21 feet of full landscape area. It's a lot of sod currently. But what we're proposing to do is essentially revamp that landscaping. There are royal palm trees that line Linton Boulevard along that landscape buffer, so those will be maintained. There are, I believe, three trees in that area that are being removed and/or relocated. But essentially, all of this landscaping is going to be, or the vast majority of the landscaping, I should say, is going to be new and improved. There is a small area that is going to be maintained, so the materials will be similar. But again, really enhanced landscaping, and it will meet the code requirements. And then, in terms of the waiver criteria, criteria one, it shall not adversely affect the neighboring area. And again, Chick-fil-A recognizes that there is this issue that is affecting the area. They are trying to be a good neighbor, so they are coming to you with a proposed solution to help improve the accessibility and circulation, improve the stacking, and accommodate it Criteria two is that it shall not significantly diminish the provision of public facilities. There's no proposed impact on public facilities. Again, this is essentially reducing a landscape area, and it's not coming to you because of the result of Chick-fil-A proposing any kind of expansion to their building. Again, they're looking for a solution here for a problem that they've heard from both the city and their customers. It shall not create an unsafe situation. For all the reasons mentioned previously, the waiver will provide an improvement in safety and a better experience for visitors and guests. And it does not result in the grant of a special privilege. And again, as the store is existing, it's not a special privilege. The city has approved other waivers for this special landscape area where it would improve an otherwise unsafe situation. And Chick-fil-A is intending to be a good neighbor to really help reduce the impacts that they're having to the city right now. And with that, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you.
I have water now. Okay, so I'm just gonna add a couple of minor points. I think you got a very good overview of the potential or the attempted solution for the property. And I'm sorry, I do rely on these slides, so hang on. So, ultimately, the applicant has been working with staff for quite a while to try to figure out how to ameliorate the queue that is backing up onto Federal Highway specifically. And so, just really quickly, I think it's important to note that there are two buildings that were approved together as the original development. So, the zoning is PC, it's got general commercial land use, and so specifically, the waiver before you is related to the special landscape setback that is required along Linton. The requirement is 20 feet, and the applicant's changes propose to reduce that to 9.9 feet. So, the site, the site was originally developed in 1971 with the SunTrust Bank. SPROB approved in 2013, the development you see before you now, which demolished the previous bank, and it constructed the drive-through. And then, there's an adjoining bank here that is still there. And I'm just making that point, because they, the neighboring property, which is part of the overall development, did provide the owner's consent form to these changes, and so I just wanted to put that on the record as well. There were two waiver requests that were approved at the time of the development. One was related to the size of the fast-food restaurant. And then, I've had some questions about the original waiver that was to queuing, and so what I wanted to make sure you understood was that the previous waiver was actually about the distance between the entry to the property and where these parking spaces were. The actual location of where you place your order for the drive-through does meet the LDRs today. Now, of course, operationally, Chick-fil-A is very successful, so they've started to try to back their, double up their order takers and all those things. But this, these spaces are actually going away under the proposed development, so that previously granted queue waiver is no longer in play. It goes away with this approval, and the only waiver necessary with the proposed redevelopment today is related to that landscape feature. So, again, you will come in from Federal Highway. It is going to shift, if approved, to a one-way circulation. You will not be able to directly enter the drive-through. You're going around the building, and then at that point, you can enter the two drive-through lanes. This is extending the queue onsite and will hopefully prevent it from backing out. In order to accomplish that, the parking has to shift around, keeping in mind that the parking spaces onsite that are in the approved development actually serve both the bank next door and this. So, they're really working to establish site improvements that work for both properties. And so, in order to accomplish this sort of corkscrewing around the restaurant, the parking has to shift to the north, and this is where the reduction is. This is the part that's on private property. I think it's important to note that there is public right-of-way that has sidewalks and landscaping and other things that have just actually recently been improved, so it will not affect those things. This is just reducing the landscape plan on the site. And so, ultimately, it's only the waiver criteria in 247B related to adversely affecting the neighboring area. The whole purpose is to reduce the impacts of the restaurant and the neighbors, and again, the bank has provided consent to the changes, the next-door bank. It's not gonna diminish the public facilities, meaning it's certainly not going to affect the design of Linton, and will hopefully protect Federal Highway a bit more from the impacts of backup and resolve what could be an unsafe situation, and whether or not it would be a special privilege to solve it this way and reduce the landscape. You know, ultimately, weigh that finding against the other three to make your determination. This project did not go before the lower board before it came before you, so we're here if you have any questions. Thank you.
Okay, great. Thanks so much. Again, it's a quasi-judicial hearing, and so if there's anybody from the public that would like to speak, step forward, state your name and address, and you have three minutes.
Good evening. I'm Christina Morrison. I live at 1,000 Lowery Drive in downtown Delray Beach, but for the previous 11 years before I moved to Lowery Drive, I lived in Tropic Isle. There was a market change at this intersection when Trader Joe's came in and when Chick-fil-A came in. It immediately became a traffic trap. If you had the aerial of the intersection up there, you would see that traffic backs up from coming off of Linton onto Federal and trying to get into Chick-fil-A right now. In addition, even though that intersection is a no-U-turn intersection, there are cars every minute making a U-turn to get into Chick-fil-A. Very dangerous, very da- it's been this way for years. You may recall that Flodot came in and redesigned that intersection three times since Trader Joe's moved in and Chick-fil-A moved in, and it still is dangerous. So, I applaud Christina and Chick-fil-A for trying to make it better by making the backup of the cars on their site rather than on Federal Highway and Linton Boulevard, and this is, it should be a big improvement. Let's hope this would be the improvement that works. Please approve this. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Seeing no one? Public comment is closed. Any rebuttal or cross-examination from either? Nope, and no. All right, so to the commission. You wanna start anywhere?
Yeah. I noticed while Chick-fil-A representative was talking, we were all grabbing axe and getting hungry. I know, at least I was-
Get in here a little while, getting hungry.
We wish we had Chick-fil-A.
At least I was getting hungry. Listen, that corner, I give it an A+ when it comes to landscaping, and that was my number-one concern, because they did a great job. Give it a D in regards to, you know, traffic management, and I'm being kind, maybe?
You are being-
So, that was my number-one concern, is just to ensure that the level of landscaping, even in a smaller space, was still gonna be what we're used to on that corner, because it really was a great job. And then, of course, addressing that lower grade in the traffic arena. So, I will absolutely be in favor.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mayor. Unfortunately, they can't offer samples, so we can decide if this is a good thing or not.
If they had known we were gonna be here this long, I'm sure they would have.
Sure, they would have, and it would've been against the law, I'm sure, too. I think this is wonderful. This is what happens when you have a small area with a successful business. I know a lot of other fast-food entities would love to have this problem, wherein people are blocking the Federal Highway to get into your establishment. I'm all for it. Thank you.
Like the guys next door, but anyway, who was mentioning them? Go ahead.
I support their request.
Okay, Deputy Vice?
Me, too. I'm hopeful that this will resolve the issue.
Okay, so I have a couple of questions. The parking on the north side, we're removing some area, and it looks almost like it's brick paver when I was, when you showed it. Is that what it is, or was it anybody? I don't care. I mean, so we're gonna be-
I think that was on my plan, showing the existing versus the proposed, and it does look like brick paver. It's actually the demolition plan showing the area of landscaping to be removed, but it is currently landscaped area, mostly sod.
And then, between the two, the building and the, and what is gonna be the buffer between this property and the bank? Because it used to have a strip of landscaping, so how are you going to delineate? Because you're having traffic going in opposite directions there.
Right, and I believe there is still a landscape strip. I believe it does need to be reduced, but there will be landscape plantings there, and let me just triple-check my plan here. I think it's under Prop. 50, though. Okay. Yeah, yeah, there is on the landscape plan, and I don't know if I can go back to that or not.
Okay, so there's gonna be something that'll be a buffer between the two.
Correct.
Then, the entrance from at Federal- Then the entrance from at Federal Highway, by the way, I hate to say it, but that's not gonna stop the U-turns, too. I know. It's still gonna be U-turns until we get really tough with enforcement over there. I think that people are gonna continue. But the entrance, you just, where are you going?
I think she's got better.
Yeah, I'm gonna, she has one that's not cut off.
You wanna see the entry?
I do. I want to see it off of, no, not that one, but the one where you're, this one. Okay, the green star. What is gonna keep people from driving south? And instead of going into the red star, they say, wait a second, it's a real quick zip right into the green star. Is there gonna be something there that's gonna prevent them from being able to make that turn in?
So the green star is showing the exit, it's a right-in, right-out?
Yes, I'm just saying, what about all those guys that say, I don't want to go all the way around this building, circling around? I'd rather just go ahead and just cut the line.
Oh, in order to prevent them from going into the drive-through?
Yeah, is there something that's gonna stop that?
Ballards and a traffic diverter.
Thank you. Ballards and a traffic diverter.
Thank you. Okay, very good. Those are the, those are the questions. I think you guys have actually something that's probably gonna work, so I'm very, very excited, because this has been a real tough intersection due to great success, you know?
And our team has been working very closely for a long time on it and working closely with staff, and we appreciate all of their efforts as well on this.
You guys did something that I would have never been able to figure out, and I mean, just that corkscrewing around, it makes all the sense in the world, because now you're queuing within. And they've done that pretty much, most of these other Chick-fil-A's are now kind of entering not off of a main street, but entering from the plaza that they're in, which, you know, it can complicate the issues within the plaza, but at least it's not stopping a main street. So this is a real step in the right direction, and I thank the team for coming up with this, so.
Thank you.
Fingers crossed it actually works. You definitely have my support.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Call the roll, please.
Mr. Frankel?
Yes.
Ms. Cassell?
Yes.
Mr. Bolston?
Yes.
Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
Mayor Petolia?
Yes.
Luck. All right, so moving on to 7C, this is direction concerning city-owned parcels located at Southwest 12th Ave.
Madam Mayor, I'll take this item briefly. As I initially reported via the March 18, 2022 City Commission Information Letter, a letter of interest was provided by leadership of the Delray Beach Community Land Trust relative to the acquisition or the potential interest to acquire property located on 12th Avenue. And as we discussed during the May 24 Joint City Commission, Community Redevelopment Agency Workshop Meeting, a number of protocols do exist that should be taken under consideration. And I am likewise under consideration to also share that the office of the city manager, despite common belief, does not have the authority to make property available or engage in such transactions unless policy consideration was offered by the mayor and city commission accordingly and in a public fashion. Likewise, I wish to provide this opportunity for the city commission to chime in and offer guidance accordingly. With respect to the aforementioned consideration, going back to the month of March, we made a commitment to be here this afternoon, June 14, to provide an opportunity as outlined. With that, I yield at this time, and will be prepared for specific questions or concerns that may arise, as well as to accept direction accordingly.
Does that mean it's to us?
Yeah.
To the commission?
Could I? Oh.
Okay, go right ahead. You start, you did-
Thanks, sorry.
Started.
So, I don't know, I'm not, I feel like the city should really retain its property, generally speaking. But I think I'm putting this out there as if the, if there is a movement to give this property away, consider giving this property away. I think it, I like, and Renee, I'm looking at you, months ago when we started putting things on the agenda, I put the item on the agenda for the diverse housing styles, tiny homes, cottage homes, micro homes. And I had the opportunity to talk to Herman at the CLT about this. Because this property adjoins a number of other properties, it could create a great opportunity for us to look at developing a small community of affordable homes. And the problem in the city is, we don't have, we don't have property. So in order to do something like this, what I'm thinking, we would need a cluster of properties to make it a worthwhile thing for us to do, because these would be much smaller homes on what ultimately, they would need much less property. So you'd need a cluster of properties. And when I was speaking to Renee, this particular area is perfectly situated for that. So what I'm asking today is if you're considering giving up the property, I say we move it towards the CRA and then begin working on maybe this exciting project. I mean, I know we need apartments, and I'm not opposed to that, but giving people a home, even if it's a very small home, is exciting to me. And the prospect of looking at this as an opportunity to develop a little community, and that's what it would be, it's exciting. So I'm just asking you, in this consideration, to think about that, because there are limited options, as I said, in terms of space necessary to provide one of these communities, and this would serve perfectly.
So let me ask a question of staff, just real quickly. What are we, what will we be losing here? I mean, this is a, how many, is there, are there offices? I know that there are some offices here, right? So what are we losing? Is there, is there anything on the, on the, that we can see, like a?
Your backup agenda should include an aerial shot.
Okay, well, can someone just put it on the, anyway, go ahead, and tell me what we're losing. We're just, is it a building or several buildings of office space?
The property includes the Neighborhood Resource Center.
Okay, and that's it?
May I, ma'am? Because she can't speak. If you don't mind, I'll be your voice. I've been, this is an ongoing opportunity that has been missed. It's not only the properties on 12th Northwest, Southwest 12th Avenue. It's also a couple of properties, I believe, on Southwest 11th. If you could, if we could see an overview of it-
Yeah, that's what I was gonna ask.
Yes, we, if we could see an overview of it. It's quite a substantial amount of property. Back in the day, there was some thought that it could be a, an opportunity to develop in the southwest in this neighborhood and eliminate a great deal of slum and blight. For some reason or another, it just never happened. And I had hoped that the particular group that had started this, initiated this desire to do something with this property, had met with each of you, because there is a thick file of how long they've been trying to utilize this property for low-low, and I'm talking the, is it the AMI? Am I saying it right? The AMI chart. City can do with the upper. Very rarely does it do with the middle, but none of our opportunities are for the lower, low-low, home, property owners, renters, et cetera. We just don't consider them, because it's not feasible. It's not affordable. In the same vein, this organization, the Community Land Trust, had been seeking the opportunity to become as independent of the city, remain a partner, but become independent of it. I had hoped when this presentation came before us, an opportunity would have been made for the Community Land Trust and any other organization to come forward and talk about how they were going to develop this property. But I'm in favor of the Community Land Trust. I hope it's not gonna be a detriment to them. This would be an opportunity to have them become independent of the city as far as having a nonprofit. Every time they need something, they have to come to the CRA, or they come to the city, and they beg for some kind of cooperation. This would be a continuous, if it becomes rental as they plan it to be, if they are successful in obtaining the property, it would be a steady source of income for them.
Who builds it?
It would be up to the Community Land Trust. And had they been given the opportunity to present it, and since they didn't probably meet with each of you, I presume, they weren't able to present their thoughts, plans, et cetera. And again, please, let's not talk about a RFQ or RFP, because we're just gonna be wasting time, as we have for any number of years. I'd have to ask Evelyn how long it's been since they've been looking at this property. I want to say back as far as 2010, 2009. And every time they've gone forward, they've had someone intercede. The city has left this property abandoned ever since, and I consider it abandoned, because if you would take the opportunity to visit, about the hour of about four, there's a gentleman that comes out, and he parks his car on 12th Avenue, and he starts playing his music, becoming disruptive, and a lot of the music is not pleasant for family ears, in my opinion. But it's, the majority of the property is so unkept by the city, it's just a field of stubble grass. We had the Community Land Trust in a trailer for 16 years. It finally just collapsed on them, and the city was forced to move them out on an emergency basis. So we're left with our little tiny neighborhood services house that's been sitting there for any number of years. So I think this is an opportunity for us to clean up the slum and blight, as you may and not have had an opportunity. I just passed this out to you. I have been given the information that we can do any number of things with our property. It doesn't have to be an RFP. I'd like to see us look at our partners and those who have done things for us, and now it's time to help them. I'm sure Evelyn would have done a better job of this, but if she were only given the opportunity to speak with you, I think you would probably agree with me, it's past time that we've done, that we do something for the Community Land Trust. Help them get on their own feet, give them an opportunity to do something, eliminating slum and blight, giving themselves a steady stream of income, and improving the heart of the southwest, because it is in that community. It's a continuation of the properties that we own just a block away, and I would almost guarantee you that you will never regret that you took that move of, as it was underlined, donate to them, but if that's not what you choose to do, at least give them an opportunity to come before you, to tell them what, tell you what they can do with that property. Thank you.
Mr. Bolston?
So we received a letter of intent, right? Did it meet our new, our new policy?
No.
Did not?
No.
Okay, so a letter of intent needs to meet that policy in order to come before us, right? Or to start any process in which a window would be open 30 days, 60 days, 90 days, to consider any other?
I mean, when you look at the content of the letter, it's almost like a public-private partnership to develop city property. And so, based on the new policy that was authored by Mr. Moore, this would not meet that criteria.
Right. So in my opinion, I don't even think it should be, it should be on the agenda. We had other letters for the golf course that didn't meet those expectations. It was never brought before us, right? They were thrown out, and then we went out to RFP. I hadn't thought of giving this land back to the CRA so that they could be in the driver's seat, and they could, you know, maybe put out for, you know, an RFP, and maybe have some innovative vision prior to putting that RFP out. I love that idea. So I would, I would be in favor. We're looking for some type of direction, some movement tonight, which I know Ms. Johnson is. I would absolutely be in favor of that. I'd be in favor of putting this into the CRA's hands. They've been very successful, especially with us as a board, in taking land and building affordable homes on that land. And then we'll discuss it at our next CRA meeting, so.
Question, as you're considering that before you make any kind of a motion, what kind of responsibility do we have to any of the tenants that are currently in these properties? Are we now going to be required to replace them with some other property? I mean, we're giving away, we're giving away land, or we're considering it, when land is very difficult to get, and we're not making any more in town. So my question is, is that, you know, what happens here with that, and, you know, how do we have to respond?
If you conveyed it to the CRA, we would, as part of the transaction, we would ask that they take over the licenses.
And what are the licenses? What kind of?
It's the Urban League, it's the legal aid.
So we would be required by, to have to replace them somewhere else, or?
No, I mean, they're licenses, and they're revocable, so you could cancel them.
Okay.
And just to be clear, the letter of intent was only for 133. It wasn't for all the parcels. One of those parcels is a drainage area that, you know, staff would not recommend conveying, because it's not buildable. It's necessary for that area.
And could we, if we did move tonight to give the land to the CRA, can we condition that with, with, for affordable housing?
Um, no.
Obviously, no. Okay.
We would just have to convey it.
Well, my question is, is that if you're not gonna do that, then it doesn't meet the requirements of the disposition of land, because in the disposition of land, you're given two opportunities. You're given, either giving it away for affordable housing use, or you're talking about land that basically was in a, an inventory that we want to get rid of. So it wouldn't meet either of those criteria in order to be able to give to?
Our code allows you to convey it to the CRA, but we couldn't do that tonight. You would have to notice it publicly, you would have to, you know, put in the newspaper and things like that. That couldn't be done tonight, but you could give direction of which parcels you wanted to move forward on.
So could we give direction to, we want to, I think it's fair to assess, does the city have a need for it? If the city has no need for it, then that is what I'd like to see happen.
Well, I mean, I think that's a good-
So we're not using it. Do we foresee a future need? You're shaking, no. Okay.
Well, we're using the Neighborhood Resource Center, so there is a use to that specific parcel.
Right.
Okay. Any comments, Vice Mayor?
I mean, Renee's been sitting here for five hours. Do you have any opinions or insight or expertise or anything that you've learned in the last She got all dressed up, she looked so d-.
She did, I might as well come up.
Hi, Renee Jaddis, the Executive Director of the Delray Beach CRA. So yes, very familiar with these parcels, I believe, in looking back in the research and our files. Evelyn's group at the CLT was interested in these properties back in 2017. After that, letter didn't, I guess, go forward, the Habitat for Humanity was interested in it as well. That didn't go forward. So I think it was mentioned that there is this long history of wanting to do something there, and it just hasn't gone forward. So I guess this would be an opportunity for that to happen, for something to happen in that area. I guess, looking at the map, we wouldn't be the retention areas, so what I'm understanding-
Where's the retention area on the map?
It's on the corner of 2nd and 11th, where that grassy-
Okay, so it's, it's actually the corner lot on, okay, I got it.
Right.
It almost looks like it's a depressed, depressed area of greenery.
Yes, exactly, exactly. So-
So you're really looking at 1, 2, 3, 4, 5 lots, if you take that one at the top and divide it, because it's a big lot?
Correct. Or I think the proposal would be, or could be, to build on that whole block on, off of 12th.
Gotcha.
May I, may I object? When we were talking about the property, I'm sorry, yes, when we were talking about the property at the Full Service Center, Historic Carver, there was a thought given that you can do something with those retention ponds. It's a use that if we put our heads together, we can put it underground, and it is not necessarily property that is then unbillable. So if we can do something progressive and think outside the box, this entire area is billable, and I think it would be excellent if you ever have an opportunity, drive by, and I hate that the blue, the blue boxes are hiding the condition of the land. I don't know if we can get rid of it, I doubt it. I don't-
I, I can see that.
But if you look at the, if you look at the top, left-hand side, that is totally abandoned. There's nothing there. The grass is awful. All of those white things you see is just dirt. Thank you.
Yep, I see that.
I would defer, oh, I would defer to public works as far as the need or use for the retention areas, so that's something for later. But if we were to be, or I guess, acquire these properties, we do have a process, too. We'd have to put it out to bid and open it up to the public, identifying what uses the CRA board would want to do, but that would have to be, go through a public RFP process as well.
And the one thing, you know, I would like to bring up is Renee and her team has been very successful in the northwest-southwest neighborhoods in some of these projects that we've gone to. So to me, knowing that there's a RFP process in place, and the expertise and the track record that you guys have shown, I would be okay with that.
All right, so-
Will you make a motion?
Need direction, or?
Yes.
You want a motion, or just direction?
I think you can just provide direction.
Okay, yeah, because I think you're gonna be bringing it back, obviously. We gotta go through the process. I think you have the direction.
Well, okay, but specifically, is it the entire block, or is it just 133? Well, okay, but specifically, is it the entire block or is it just one thirty-three?
Entire block.
One thirty-three, one forty-one, and one forty-five, which would be that whole strip.
And then I think you need to really do the research on that corner property before you bring it back.
And there, there was a corner and then there's a little, well, it just moved. But there was a little piece of parking lot, so.
I see that. On that empty lot.
So if staff determines that we don't have any purpose for it, then we can include that as well. What about the Neighborhood Resource Center? Do you want to make that part of the conveyance?
Well, it would have to be, I think.
The licenses, sorry.
May I just say that this, everything this highlighted in the blue with the slashes should be considered the partial. And if I'm not mistaken, according to the history of this land, it was purchased by the CRA in the beginning. How it got conveyed to the city, I have no idea, so.
Only, only some of it. Some of it was through tax deeds.
Okay.
Second?
Yes.
So there's consensus?
Yeah. I don't think we needed a vote, but Renee, if, if I may, because we do have commercial property, which is going to be coming available at some point in the future, I hope that we would give first option to the people that are in the neighborhoods.
Well, anybody who is, is assisting.
Because we would want to relocate them.
The, oh, the commercial, okay. That was actually my clarification, is if we are assume, or if the request would be to assume the licenses to the CRA, if there could be assistance from city staff and management, because we.
I would be supportive to that effect, that's part of the process.
Right, because they're all new tenants to us or would-be new tenants that there would be a recommendation to for us to assume.
Of course.
Well, I would, you know, let me just say this. How many tenants are we talking about, three?
I don't know, we never did resolve, I don't think the American Academy.
Because to me, I'm, I'm looking at the, oh, I hear.
Is resolved?
Good afternoon, Madam Mayor, members of the Commission. You have Urban League.
Legal Aid.
United, not, not United, I'm sorry. You have Urban League, the American Academy. You also have Cross Ministry and you have Legal Aid.
However, with the American Academy, we are?
Yeah, we're working on relocating American Academy. We're looking, working along with Parks to find an alternate spot for them. And then we have CLT that's in the building as well. So those are the tenants.
There will be ample time, though, so people don't panic. I mean, this would take a long time to transfer the property and then a long time to consider what we're going to do with it in the future and then a long time to get it done. So there's no urgency or concern for the tenants that are currently in place. I hope people realize that.
True.
All right, so I think you have your direction as to where we're going with that.
Thank you, ladies and gentlemen.
No.
Nope, Commissioner, okay. All right, so let me see where we are. Sorry?
Nomination.
Yes, nomination time, all right. So seven D, we are nominating for the Affordable Housing Committee. And we're going to start with.
Mayor, can I just?
Sure.
Just because I've sat on this board for almost the last year.
I mean, there's six people, there's going to be six.
And there's six, I know, I'm not, I, I just wanted to take this opportunity just to mention that in my county and state meetings in regards to affordable housing, that this committee is now like the standard. They can't wait to hear from Delray, the amount of times they're meeting and the recommendations that they're, that they're making. So I'm excited to see so many people for reappointment.
Great, okay, so we'll start with.
I had a question.
I'm sorry, what?
I'm a little concerned, is this Affordable Housing Advisory Committee supposed to be longstanding? Or is it just for that requirement to the state that we needed to satisfy it?
I think we have to.
It does have an annual requirement, so we do have to maintain it.
Yeah, it's, they meet, what, twice or three times a year, something like that, according to the state.
But they had gotten into the habit of meeting every month. And I think.
A lot of work to be done.
Of course, but is it over? It's going to go back to once or twice a year?
A minimum requirement of three times a year. And any considerations based on task would be a function of review. So minimum of three times a year is the requirement. And any additional tasks that may be necessary to, and require additional meetings based on specific tasks is to be evaluated on a case-by-case basis.
Who makes the decision, you do?
That would be a function of the Office of the City Manager, yes.
I think it was just extended.
I'm sorry?
Didn't you just extend it, Mr. Moore?
We added two additional meetings above and beyond the calendar. I provided a note to that effect via an information letter report recently, explaining the rationale, connecting the dots with respect to why a couple additional meetings are necessary. However, outside of that is fixed.
The reason I'm asking and stating this is we are using two different departments' staff time and the ongoing needs of these departments. Everybody's overworked and understaffed. And just to add something, just to have a, a group gather and, and meet, just to say they're meeting, I'd just like to.
I, I've got to jump in there. This, this work is, this team is not just meeting just to say they met. That's what was happening before I was on that committee. That's what happened before they were on that committee, is that they were hitting the minimum every, for two or three times a year just to meet that state statute and not, and, and not making any major recommendations every single year. That's exactly why there was so much work to be done. So this committee said, we need, we need to meet every month. And, and City Manager approved that. As a matter of fact, sometimes they've met even more than that in order to go through all our policies in regards to affordable housing, to, to, to make sweeping adjustments, which we approved, which was sent up to the state. So to say that they are meeting just to meet, these are very busy people. They've got better things to do.
I quite understand, and I don't need a lecture.
And as far as they're concerned, the work has just started.
Let me state, I attended the meetings. I am cutting you off because it's getting rather late and we don't need to have this discussion.
I, I, let me just say this. I, I know everybody's getting really testy because we're all hungry and we've been here for a long time. I understand both of your positions. I think that you have valid points. I think that you do too, because we have, we, we do have limited, you know, we don't want to overwork the, the, the staff that we have. They're, they're going to all these meetings. It's not just one meeting, it's all these meetings that they must go to. So I'm going to put it on the City Manager.
Where it belongs.
Pardon me?
Where it belongs. And if I may, I'm mindful of every point across the board. I do my best to strike a balance and I use my weekly reports to keep you all informed of those matters accordingly. So all of those points are very well taken. I'm very mindful in that regard and I will continue to be.
Thank you, Mr. Moore.
Thank you.
And I would also just say, you know, suggest, because I'm going to support, you know, Commissioner Johnson's concerns, that, you know, in the situation where we have a lot of people that are meeting just to be able to push an agenda, that's not okay either.
No, it's not, and I'm mindful of that as well.
Got it, okay.
Understood, loud and clear, have been.
All right, let's move on.
Agenda of affordable housing.
Nominations for appointment to the Affordable Housing Advisory Committee, as I started. So it would be for a Vice Mayor.
Thank you. Well, I have someone that emailed me, she wants to continue.
Oh, you're going to take her.
And her name is Edmei Moran.
Yes. Okay, so do we have a second?
Second.
And do we have any questions, concerns? No, call a roll, please.
Ms. Cassell?
Yes.
Mr. Bolston?
Yes.
Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
Mayor Petrolia?
Yes.
Mr. Frankel?
Yes, thank you.
All right, moving on to Deputy Vice Mayor.
Yes, I got emails as well, and one from Ally Levin.
Second.
Okay, any?
I'm sorry, what was the name?
Ally Levin.
Levin. Okay, call a roll, please.
Mr. Bolston?
Yes.
Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
Mayor Petrolia?
Yes.
Mr. Frankel?
Yes.
Ms. Cassell?
Yes.
All right, moving on to Mr. Bolston.
I would like to reappoint Ms. Angela Burns.
Second.
Call the roll, please.
Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
Mayor Petrolia?
Yes.
Mr. Frankel?
Yes.
Ms. Cassell?
Yes.
Mr. Bolston?
Yes.
Okay, moving on to Commissioner Johnson.
Yes, I, Ms. Cantina, Cantinia, Cantinia?
Second.
Okay, call the roll, please.
Mayor Petrolia?
Yes.
Mr. Frankel?
Yes.
Ms. Cassell?
Yes.
Mr. Bolston?
Yes.
Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
And correct me if I'm wrong, Ms. Bates, she hasn't been called?
She has not been called.
Okay, I'm going to, not, I'm going to push her name forward. Call the roll, please.
Mr. Frankel?
Yes.
Ms. Cassell?
Yes.
Mr. Bolston?
Yes.
Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
Mayor Petrolia?
Yes, and now finally, Mr.?
Last but not least, there's only one left, Ms. Deborah Walker.
There you go.
Second.
Call the roll, please.
Ms. Cassell?
Yes.
Mr. Bolston?
Yes.
Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
Mayor Petrolia?
Yes.
Mr. Frankel?
All right, moving on to nominations for appointment of the Education Board. And luckily, I get to start first because I'm going to put Kay Johnson's name forward.
Mine.
It's the first time I get to do that, everybody's always taken right now. Do you have a second?
Yes, second.
Okay, call the roll, please.
Mr. Bolston?
Yes.
Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
Mayor Petrolia?
Yes.
Mr. Frankel?
Yes.
Ms. Cassell?
Yes.
Okay, moving on, we've got now Mr. Frankel.
I will move the reappointment of Donna Van Horn. I'm sorry.
Second.
Thank you.
Call the roll.
Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
Mayor Petrolia?
Yes.
Mr. Frankel?
Yes.
Ms. Cassell?
Yes.
Mr. Bolston?
Okay, and Ms.
Trying to concentrate on the names.
I mean, Ms. Julie, please.
Yes, Berlanga?
Second.
What was the name?
Berlanga.
Berlanga, okay, thank you.
Okay, got a second, okay, call the roll, please.
Mayor Petrolia?
Yes.
Mr. Frankel?
Yes.
Ms. Cassell?
Yes.
Mr. Bolston?
Yes.
Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
Okay, moving on to Commissioner Bolston.
I'd like to move the name Rayco Knight.
Second.
Okay, call the roll, please.
All right, Mr. Frankel?
Yes.
Ms. Cassell?
Yes.
Mr. Bolston?
Yes.
Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
Mayor Petrolia?
Yes. Ms. Johnson?
It is my turn, I'm trying to look at my numbers. I'd like to move the name Angelica Nevin? Oh, she's been done, hasn't she? Nevin?
She's not on there.
She's not on the list.
Seven E.
I'm in seven E.
She's there, but she didn't, she.
She withdrew, okay.
I don't know, did she?
Yeah, she's not on the list.
In the backup, it says she would like to be reappointed.
Yes, that's what I thought.
Is that Purperto too, but she didn't apply.
Okay.
Yeah, so I think you got a poll from the list.
Nevin's is gone, okay. And Dickerson, Ms. Laura Dickinson is my next.
Second.
All right, call the roll, please.
Wait a minute, you, you wanted Nevin first, correct? Because I think we did a late update and the application was added in there. I think her name was on the backup, but the application wasn't there. So we had to add the application in there.
So Ms. Nevin is still allowable. I thought I had mine, thank you, I'm going crazy here. I read, I can withdraw Dickerson and reinstate Angelica Nevin.
Second to reinstatement.
Okay. Call the roll, please.
Ms. Cassell?
Yes.
Mr. Bolston?
Yes.
Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
Mayor Petrolia?
Yes.
Mr. Frankel?
Yes.
And before you go any further, this might be a good opportunity, these last-minute things. We're doing stuff up until the meetings and I cannot, I don't know, can we have a better cutoff if, for whatever? And I'm sure you'll be happy to have that happen. I don't know how this happened, but it should not have. Can't we just draw a line in the sand?
We do.
If you're not in there by Friday?
We should.
More than that.
That's it.
Oh, it's ten days.
I agree.
Ten days.
Yes. Okay, so was Van Horn called?
She was.
Yes.
Okay, so let me go back up to Ms. Dickerson.
Second.
Okay, call the roll, please.
Mr. Bolston?
Yes.
Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
Mayor Petrolia?
Yes.
Mr. Frankel?
Yes.
Ms. Cassell?
Yes.
All right, we're getting there. A lot of them. All right, so we're moving on to the Green Implementation Board and we're going to start with Vice Mayor again.
I'm going to move the name Lindsay Zuckerman, Zuckerburg.
Mayor and I just met her, she's quite lovely.
She really is, she was so excited.
Yes.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All right, call the roll, please.
Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
Mayor Petrolia?
Yes.
Mr. Frankel?
Yes.
Ms. Cassell?
Yes.
Mr. Bolston?
Yes.
She's gonna be excited, Ms., uh, Ms. Cassell?
Uh, Steppner.
Second.
Call the roll, please.
Mayor Petolia?
Yes.
Mr. Frankel?
Yes.
Ms. Cassell?
Yes.
Mr. Ballston? Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
Okay, and moving on to, um, Mr., I mean, Commissioner Ballston.
Yes, I'd like to move the name Evan Oriana.
Second.
Call the roll, please.
Mr. Frankel?
Yes.
Ms. Cassell?
Yes.
Mr. Ballston?
Yes.
Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
Mayor Petolia?
Yes. Okay, now we've got the nomination to the Parking Management Board, and we're gonna start with Commissioner Johnson.
Yes, thank you very much. I move the name Ms., Mrs. Carolyn, Carol A. Anderson.
Second.
Okay, call the roll, please.
Ms. Cassell?
Yes.
Mr. Ballston?
Yes.
Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
Mayor Petolia?
Yes.
Mr. Frankel?
Yes.
I'm gonna move the name Jergen, Jergen?
Second.
Call the roll, please.
Mr. Ballston?
Yes.
Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
Mayor Petolia?
Yes.
Mr. Frankel?
Yes.
Ms. Cassell?
Yes.
Okay, now we're gone to the nomination for the Police Advisory Board, we're gonna start off with Commissioner Ballston.
I'd like to move the name Mr. Paul Cannon.
Mr. Cannon?
Yes.
Okay.
Second.
Call the roll, please.
Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
Mayor Petolia?
Yes.
Mr. Frankel?
Yes.
Ms. Cassell?
Yes.
Mr. Ballston?
Okay, and to Commissioner Johnson?
Yes, Mr. Todd, I'd like to move, um, Mr. Todd Lahura.
LaRue.
You say it so nicely.
I know.
Second.
Call the roll, please.
They'll probably kill me.
Mayor Petolia?
Yes.
Mr. Frankel?
Yes.
Ms. Cassell?
Yes.
Mr. Ballston? Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
We got a nice letter from a, um, a person by the name of McCarthy, so I'm gonna move that person's name.
Second.
Next.
Okay, call the roll, please.
Mr. Frankel?
Yes.
Ms. Cassell?
Yes.
Mr. Ballston? Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
Mayor Petolia?
Yes, and now we're on to Vice Mayor Frankel.
I'd like to move the name Mr. Willie Potts.
Right.
Second.
Call the roll, please. Oh, sure, okay.
Ms. Cassell?
Yes.
Mr. Ballston?
Yes.
Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
Mayor Petolia?
Yes.
Mr. Frankel?
Yes.
And Ms. Cassell?
Yes, Aldo Torres.
Okay.
Second.
Thank you.
Okay, call the roll, please.
Mr. Ballston? Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
Mayor Petolia?
Yes.
Mr. Frankel? Ms. Cassell?
Yes.
Now we got, moving to the Public Art Advisory Board, and we're gonna start with, uh.
Someone told me that the art, Public Art Advisory Board was, maybe, no, 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 maybe this was the, um, Arts, I'm sorry, Second Avenue, um, Arts District, Art District was disbanding, this is not this.
Mm-mm.
Okay.
No. Okay, so moving on, we got, uh.
Sorry, thank you.
Vice Mayor Frankel, you've got the first election.
I am basing mine on a wonderful exhibit we all saw at a CRA meeting, a gentleman by the name of Mr. Samuel Spear.
Oh, you got mine.
Yeah.
Second.
Call the roll, please.
Yes.
Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
Mayor Petolia?
Yes.
Mr. Frankel?
Yes.
Ms. Cassell?
Yes.
Mr. Ballston?
Yes.
Okay, Deputy Vice Mayor, you're next.
Yes, uh, Robert Hecht.
What's his name?
Robert Hecht.
Hecht, yeah, second.
Thank you.
Okay, call the roll, please.
Mayor Petolia?
Yes.
Mr. Frankel?
Yes.
Ms. Cassell?
Yes.
Mr. Ballston?
Yes.
Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
Okay, and then Commissioner Ballston?
Yes, I'd like to move, uh, to reappoint Joseph Ehrenstein.
Second.
Call the roll, please.
Mr. Frankel?
Yes.
Ms. Cassell?
Yes.
Mr. Ballston?
Yes.
Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
Mayor Petolia?
And yes, and now to Commissioner Johnson.
Oh, boy, um, I'm gonna move the last name Sherman, I didn't really, everyone should get a chance, Mr. Sherman, Mr., Ms. Sherman.
Okay, call the roll, please.
Ms. Cassell?
Yes.
Mr. Ballston?
Yes.
Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
Mayor Petolia?
Yes.
Mr. Frankel?
You're doing good, Terry.
And finally, the nomination for the Community Redevelopment Agency Board that goes to Commissioner Cassell.
Uh, yes, uh, Ms. Gray.
Second.
Okay, uh, any conversation, call the roll.
Mr. Ballston?
Yes.
Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
Mayor Petolia?
Yes.
Mr. Frankel?
Yes.
Ms. Cassell?
Yes.
All right, very good.
Good job, Terry.
We got through that quicker than we got through anything else tonight. All right, so seven K, approval of Resolution seventy-three dash twenty-two.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I'm Ken Edwards, Sustainability Officer for the City of Delray Beach. Mayor, Vice Mayor, Deputy Vice Mayor and Commissioners. Thank you for the opportunity to speak this evening on the Tree Planting Program Agreement. So before you is Resolution seventy-three dash twenty-two. It's an agreement to continue the tree planting initiative, goals of which are to plant ten thousand trees, reach a canopy cover of twenty-eight percent by the year twenty thirty-five. The agreement is for a one-year term to plant two thousand trees, total cost at three hundred twenty-five thousand eight hundred and eight dollars. There are, there's an option for three annual renewals, which would complete the tree planting project. The RFP was advertised on December eighth, twenty twenty-one. It was to run until January seventh, twenty twenty-two. We extended it to January fourteenth, and the six vendors that had downloaded, uh, the, the RFP were contacted, and, uh, they did not respond, it did not submit, so we allowed it to close. The selection committee looked at the submittal that we had and deemed it responsive. So the negotiation committee with representatives from affected departments reviewed and went into negotiation. There was a fifty-seven thousand dollar reduction, and that's where we got the three hundred twenty-five thousand before you. This slide has a comparison of, uh, cost information to, to give you some, something to compare to. You have the Year One Agreement on the left, Year Two on, on the right. Uh, the table has size, number of trees and price information. If you look at the, at the small tree line, um, trees in the first year were twelve dollars. In, uh, current, um, agreement, they're thirty-three dollars each, so with, with time and everything has, has gone up, that's about a three-time increase. For the medium trees, uh, Year One, fifty-five dollars each, it's gone up about double. Um, and then the largest trees, extra-large, uh, uh, well, the price for large trees now is almost as much as for extra-large. So as with everything, the, the prices have, have gone up, and that's a, a good reason for the, the increase. Another point is, if you look at the numbers of trees, in, uh, Year One, there were a thousand small trees. We have eight hundred in Year Two, so there are fewer of the smaller trees that cost less. For the largest tree item, uh, in Year One, there was two hundred, we're going to five hundred, so two and a half times. There's a shift to larger trees, and the benefit there is that you put a bigger tree in the ground, it will start growing, uh, more quickly, and will get more canopy benefits more quickly. So, uh, a couple of main points for, for the increase there. Also, the maintenance and supplies line, there is, uh, about double, uh, maintenance in the Year Two Agreement. That's important because this is a big investment of tree resources. The maintenance has, uh, watering and inspections to make sure that those trees survive throughout the one-year warranty period. And all in all, um, looking at the cost of trees, uh, the shift to the larger trees and the, the maintenance dollar, that accounts for all of the increase, and in fact, in, uh, the Year Two Agreement, the, uh, administrative and labor costs are, are less than it was for the previous agreement. Some other context for, uh, considering tree value. Next month, a tree inventory report will come before you, and that, uh, has information on ten thousand five hundred ninety-nine trees on city properties and, and right-of-ways. By a standard valuation method, it comes to thirty-one million dollars worth of, of value. In this, uh, tree planting program, there are ten thousand trees, um, and it will cost, at the current rate, about one and a half million dollars, so that's not a bad return. It'll cost, uh, it'll take a decade or, or more for those trees to, to grow, but still significant return on, on the investment. So shifting from cost and RFP to, um, what is the plan for getting trees, uh, in the ground, uh, as we go forward? So there are several different approaches. Here, um, is a good portion of the city that has lower tree canopy, I'll talk more about that in, in a minute. The pink sites were identified in the tree inventory. This was one of the deliverables that they would look for sites that would be good potential planting sites. There were three hundred and twenty of these that were identified. We don't know that all of these will work as planting locations, we want to get the right tree in the right place. So there will be, uh, my office, uh, Mary and I will be working with, uh, the vendor and also with affected departments to screen those and make sure that, uh, all the good planting sites are, are found. We want to be sure to maximize trees on, on city property. But all of those three hundred and twenty sites are, are unlikely to, to be good sites, but we will use all that are. It's important to note that in the RFP for the tree inventory, we asked for up to a thousand planting sites to be identified. They only came up with three hundred and twenty. So we are, in fact, uh, coming to the end of sites on city properties for trees to be planted. So where are we gonna plant trees? There are several approaches that we can use to identify here, this map. Uh, the yellow areas were identified in the two thousand nineteen Tree Canopy Assessment Study, and those are areas that have lower percent canopy than the average. So we're gonna focus, uh, several different approaches into those areas. And though the, the writing is small, I, I wanted to put in all of the names of the HOAs and community groups, because we're going to reach out to them. We're gonna look for leaders in, in the community, we're gonna look at common areas in those, uh, communities especially, because if we use city money to plant in common areas, then we'll have more people that benefit from, from those trees. So we'll address urban heat island, we'll have better air quality, um, better health in the communities, because they'll, they'll get out into those areas. So that's one approach, um, within the, the lower canopy areas. We can also engage city staff that live in, in the city to, to help us with contacts in the community and to locate areas to plant trees. We'll use social media requests to identify, uh, partners that, uh, that we can look for planting sites. Um, and also an example, in a lot of the things that sustainability is, is doing, we, we talk about other projects that we do. Trees is a main thing that we talk about. Last week, we had a meeting with Habitat for Humanity on another project, and they want to include, uh, trees on, on their project sites. I expect that there will be several other partners where we have those same kinds of, of commonality, and, uh, so that will be another way that we find ways to plant trees. Uh, another approach, in the tree inventory report, there were a hundred and twelve dead trees, uh, that were found. A hundred and twenty-seven trees that were in poor or critical condition, and by definition, they can't be, uh, resurrected in any way, uh, or, or maintained. They will stay in that condition. And a hundred and seventy-six, uh, non-native invasive species that really should be considered to take out because their seeds destroy other habitat, they're, they're really not good, uh, for the city. So this will be maybe a couple of hundred, uh, sites where we can plant trees also. So there will be a mix of approaches that we use to, uh, identify planting, uh, sites. And going forward, it will be even more and more important that we work with the community and identify partners, because we're not gonna have sites on, on city par, property. So we want to be sure to not make the mistakes that many other tree planting projects in other cities have seen by not engaging with the community, not explaining the, the benefits, and not having something very positive that the city is doing, uh, to try to help, uh, help out with the community. And with that, I'll, I'll take any questions.
Question, um, just this first, nope, that last slide, can go back. Is that slide, all those trees that you've, uh, identified, are they on pro, public property?
Yes.
Could I ask two questions? Um, so, would, why not plant bigger trees? I mean, the goal is to increase the canopy as quickly as possible. We're spending a lot of money on the smaller trees, and we know it's going to take so long. So I'm just curious why we don't just invest in larger trees? And the second question is, for the trees that are on city property, are we using the tree fund? Okay?
Uh, I'll take the second question first.
Okay.
Uh, yes, the tree trust fund is to be used for all of this planting in Year Two. There is enough money in the tree trust fund at the same cost, and, and it would be a renewal, so there would be a negotiation. But at this cost, there is, uh, more than enough for two years.
Right.
As far as planting larger trees, it really is a balance. Larger trees certainly are, are, are going to lead to more canopy more quickly, but they're gonna cost more. And when you get up to a thirty-gallon, uh, or higher tree, you're gonna have two hundred and fifty dollars just for the tree, plus the mobilization and the planting costs, and you're really quickly gonna get up, like, I would just estimate from trees that I have, have looked at myself, like, three hundred and fifty dollars a tree. So we're, we're looking at a one fifty, uh, for a larger tree, which is, uh, up to a twenty-five gallon, and it's, it's, it's a good balance between price and size.
Okay, thank you.
On the same, on that same level, I mean, if we're having difficulty finding enough places to plant these trees on public property, I agree with you, why not just increase the size so that we're not having to wait another five years to get to that, you know, that larger canopy size, getting there much quicker? Because the whole idea is to get to the canopy, get that canopy going. Um, you know, we've done a lot of plantings, and they're just little spendly trees for the most part, for a very long period of time. So why wouldn't we want to just spend the extra money and plant less trees, but better, you know, larger trees? And also, do we have a plan for legacy trees? I mean, we have trees out there with canopies that would be a hundred of these smaller trees, and we let them go. They're just chopped down. So my question is, is that, is there any ability to save those?
Uh, respectfully, that, that is a very different discussion. That is, uh, a Development Services and, and Ordnance Review. It's a very valid question. In any tree planting program, it's gotta be multi-pronged, and you have to protect the, the canopy that, that you have, absolutely. But it is, is, at least as complicated as, as this tree planting effort, so I'm, I'm gonna, I'm gonna go past that. For now, we, we'll come back to it. But the, the planting of the larger trees is, is a very good suggestion. The, the size of trees that we're looking at here are, uh, the twenty-five gallon, or really looking at a right tree in the right place, maybe a fifteen-gallon on city properties, but I'm really working towards having the, the larger tree on city properties. And this will be a tree that's ten to twelve feet tall, it'll be a two-inch caliber, caliper, so it will be a, a substantial tree. It will not be a small four-foot, which is some of the ones that you saw, uh, before. Those are the smaller trees for the giveaways. But, you know, there, there are concerns, uh, to be addressed with giving away a tree to, to a private property also. So those need to be the smaller ones.
Absolutely.
There aren't any smaller trees planned to be planted on city property or, or partner property.
I jumped in on Commissioner Cassell.
No, no, that was.
Okay, so.
No, thank you.
Go right ahead.
I'll let him go first, and then I'm six, next, please.
I agree, I, I would like to see, uh, see us, um, diving into the tree fund outside of this contract. I know the goal of this contract, right? We've set, we've set a goal to plant so many trees, that's quantity, and that's the goal of this contract. So of course I'll be in favor of, uh, continuing to partner with Community Greening for this. I got an update from staff in regards to protecting some of our trees, and you guys are going through that together, and what are some of the legal challenges of property rights and so forth? And I look forward to looking at that as well and getting as aggressive as possible. But I, I would just like to echo what, uh, the, the mayor and, uh, and Ms. Cassell mentioned, is that additional tree funds that aren't going towards this initiative to plant one, you know, uh, uh, thousands of trees, I would like to see go towards bringing in mature trees. Even if it is at, at a higher cost, we have, we have the budget. We have the highest, um, tree penalty, I think, in the county, and therefore we have a pretty healthy, healthy budget. So, um, if this is the strategy, to go quantity, right? And I just hope that the rest of the budget is used to go after, I don't wanna say quality, but to go after bigger trees, um, that are strategically located throughout the city on pri, on public property.
Very good.
Thank you, thank you, Mayor. I love your last bullet. Managing a healthy and expanding tree canopy can be controversial. There are so many problems with a program that's a tree canopy. On the one hand, we have developers who come in and mow down all the trees. We don't do anything but say, "Okay, pay us," and we're talking about years of unrecoverable, uh, time. Those trees will never, uh, reach the height or age in our lifetime, so that, it means all of those years that we allowed this mowing, uh, we just can't recover. I have a question and concern about, and I couldn't quite see everything with your tiny, um, the pink where you were planting them. I would encourage you not to plant them in drainage ponds. There was one just next to Spady, I watched those trees, and I think they're probably all of those that you, some of those that you said are poor condition, didn't survive, because they were little tiny spendly trees. The water would come, and it would sit there, and I think that destroyed the trees. Secondly, and lastly, you have, surprise, surprise, started planting trees on the property, city-owned property, at Lake Ida and Congress. There's gonna be some development there. Now, we're planting trees there, I don't know how long or how soon the developing is gonna happen. We're gonna have to move those trees, so why would we plant?
Or cut them down.
Or cut them down, I would hope not, but we're gonna pay them to move them again, and they'll die. So all I'm saying is, let's be a little bit more judicious where we put these trees, thank you.
And if I can speak, sorry.
What, no, no, go ahead.
Vice, did you have anything more?
No, thank you.
Okay, so, um, there's just one other thing that I wanted to ask, is that when we're doing a renewal, it says that there's two additional renewals on this, this is, you know, we're, we're moving into, and everybody up here, I think, wants a tree canopy, this, so, so don't, you know, mince my words. But just to make sure that it's working, are we gonna have the op, option of being able to renew it on an annual basis? Because we may wanna tweak this, this may not work like it's really, um, and we, I don't wanna be bound to, this is what we've got for three years. So I'm asking you, are we gonna see this each year for renewal and in order to be able to determine whether or not it's working, and if we do wanna tweak it?
Yes, that's, that's my intention going forward, because the conditions are gonna change. We're gonna plant on city properties, we may completely exhaust that going forward. And with the input on, uh, additional larger trees, and what kind of success we have in attracting, uh, partners, we may want to adjust, uh, the numbers and, and even the, the goals. But, you know, for now, it's ten thousand trees in five years to reach twenty-eight percent, we're gonna do everything that we can. But each year, yes, uh, a renewal and an opportunity to, to make change.
And I also just wanna mention that I agree with, um, Commissioner Johnson about making sure that where we're putting these trees are not gonna be slated for, um, you know, uh, taking them out in, in the next five years, because again, that's another cost, we're gonna lose the tree. Instead, just trying to, like, focus on where, where they're not gonna really be disrupted for the most part, if that's possible. I mean, I know that there's, it's not a hundred percent, but, you know, if we can figure out how to shade, you know, sidewalks and, uh, and, and, and tree line, uh, you know, um, streets, those are things that last, seem, seem to last forever, because nobody's building on a right-of-way, um, that's shading a street or a sidewalk, so anyway, that's just my.
Mayor?
Understood.
Yes.
Just for clarity, the resolution actually allows the city manager to execute the amendments and renewals, so they're not coming back to you. The only thing that would come back to you are the budgetary considerations.
Well, I think.
Can we get an annual presentation with recommendations from staff as far as how our strategy is changing?
That would be the direction pertinent.
You can do that, but the question was about the renewals, so those yours.
Could we add in that we have, uh, you know, an annual, um, uh, you know, uh, presentation prior to, so that we can discuss it?
That would be appropriate.
You can make that part of the motion.
Happy to do it.
Good.
Okay, great. Motion to approve resolution number 73-22.
Call the roll, please.
Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
Mayor Petolia?
Yes.
Mr. Frankel?
Yes.
Ms. Cassell?
Yes.
Mr. Boalston?
Yes.
Okay, and next ordinance, I believe you were going to pull.
I'm going to read the caption, open it up for public comment, and then I'd like to postpone it.
Okay.
Sorry, I can't find it. There it is. An ordinance of the City Commission of the City of Dalvery Beach, Florida, amending the land development regulations of the City of Dalvery Beach Code of Ordinances, Chapter 4, Zoning Regulations, Article 4.4, Base Zoning Districts, Section 4.413, Central Business CBD District. Table 4.13A, allowable uses and structures in the CBD sub-districts, to add outdoor use areas at standalone bars as a conditional use and accessory use. Amending Article 4.6, supplemental district regulations, Section 4.6.6, commercial industrial uses to operate within a building. Subsection B, allowable outside usage to include permanent seating at standalone bars as an allowable outside use. And subsection C, restrictions on outside usage to establish regulations governing outside usage at standalone bars, providing a conflicts clause, providing severability clause, authority to codify and providing an effective date. My staff was recently contacted by an attorney, Mr. Carney, and there's a concern as to whether or not we can make a distinction between beer and wine and alcohol. And so if we can't, you know, this is privately initiated. I don't want to bring in a lawsuit, so I would be telling you that. It's really all or nothing. I still want to do some research on it. So if we could open it up for public comment and then we can move to postpone to July 15th.
Very good. At this point in time, if anybody at present would like to speak to ordinance 08-22, please step forward, state your name and address, and you have three minutes.
And just as a reminder, anybody who speaks today won't be allowed to speak at the next hearing.
That was cute.
Okay, so seeing no one, public comment is closed. And were we postponing it to a date?
We should postpone to July 15th.
Okay, so I need a motion.
Sorry, July 12th.
Second.
All right, please call the roll.
Ms. Mayor Petolia?
Yes.
Mr. Frankel?
Yes.
Ms. Cassell?
Yes.
Mr. Boalston?
Yes.
Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
Okay, moving on to ordinance 11-22. This is still a public hearing.
An ordinance of the City Commission of the City of Dalvery Beach, Florida, amending the Code of Ordinances by amending Title V, Public Works, Chapter 52, Water, by enacting a new Section 52.07, Landscape Irrigation, to implement the South Florida Water Management District mandatory year-round landscape irrigation conservation measures rule. Establish a landscape irrigation schedule and exceptions thereto. Require irrigation systems to utilize technology that inhibits or interrupts watering during periods of sufficient moisture. Provide for variances from the landscape irrigation schedule and provide for enforcement of this ordinance. Amending Section 52.99, Penalty, to establish penalties for violations of this ordinance and to remove criminal sanctions, but increase the financial penalty for violations of Sections 52.65 through 52.70, which place restrictions on water use during water shortage emergencies and increase the financial penalty for violations of Sections 52.80 through 52.85. Providing the installation and maintenance of backflow prevention devices. Providing a conflicts clause, providing severability clause, authority to codify, and providing effective date. I did leave at your, I guess, the benchmarking that was discussed at our last meeting. One of the attorneys prepared a spreadsheet for your review to basically show you where other cities are at.
Okay, great. So this is a public hearing, so I'm going to open it up to anybody in attendance that would like to speak to ordinance number 11-22. Step forward, state your name and address, and you have three minutes. I know we had some speakers last time, but it looks like we've got nobody this time. So public hearing is closed to the commission.
Mayor, I think one of the issues last time you and I were discussing seemed like we were on the same page, but there needed to be some type of benchmarking. I'm looking at, you know, line number one here. That seems aligned to what, you know, you and I were discussing. There was the benchmark there. I would be in favor of that.
Also Boynton.
Which is a, yes, the top two. So there's our two neighboring cities. First fine is $50, second fine 150, and then third fine 500.
I think that that's what we had discussed and I think that as long as it's something that we can, you were, you were basically, your placement was basically saying that we basically had to have some benchmark and all, no, okay, because I was wondering if we could, because I'm looking at this and it's all over the board.
It has to be reasonable, right? So, you know, this is what you discussed, the 50 and the 150, that's reasonable. The only difference is we don't have that third fine. So ours is 50 and 150 for subsequent violations.
That's fine. Yep. Okay, so is there anything, any other questions, Sure?
I'm reading this and I don't, because I didn't have the ability to speak with Lynn before this. And I'm reading that establish penalties for violations of the ordinance and to remove criminal sections, but increase the financial penalty for violations of Sections, which replace restrictions, which replace restrictions on water, doing water, okay, increase the financial penalty. Require installation and maintenance of backflow prevention devices. We are now going to require that on each and every home in the city, correct?
Yes.
Does, do we understand, or is it, it is my understanding, that that is an annual requirement that the backflow preventer is certified by a licensed plumber, which can run as high as?
Hundred, 150, something like that, yep.
So we're adding $150 to every household.
No, it's only if you have the reclaimed water.
That's not what Lynn just said.
Backflow preventers are related to the reclaimed water program.
Only reclaimed water.
Yes, it's not.
Is that correct?
Good evening, Madam Mayor, Commissioners. The houses that they have separate meter for water, for the sprinkler system, they need to have devices also.
Right, so.
The one that they have separate meter, the homes that they use the same meter for their inside use and irrigation, they don't need to have anything. But the one that they have separate meter, sometimes they have two-inch, and those are air vacuum breaker, and those are the one that they, they must have had it since even the day that they went to get a permit to have that kind of setup. It's nothing new.
So you're saying, Mr. Hesam, Mr. Hedgermary, sorry?
Yes, ma'am.
That if we find a dual system, that there is a backflow preventer already on that property?
Yes, they all should have it, ma'am.
You said should.
We already have done it. We already have done it as part of our cross connection control survey. They already have been notified. It doesn't have nothing to do with this irrigation restriction. They already been notified. They already been receiving the letter from the utilities that you have to test that. It really doesn't have nothing to do with the fine that has been.
No, 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 I wasn't even talking about that. I'm just, this is information that.
Yes, ma'am.
Is not very clear. This is an area that people don't quite understand. And I didn't understand it because it doesn't say anything about reclaimed water in this. It doesn't say anything about two systems. And I know it might be understood, but I think our wordings and our laws and our ordinances should state what we're talking about. Because if I read this, it would, to me, say, everybody's going to have to get a backflow, backflow prevention device. And annually, it's going to need to be inspected because we don't even say that in there. If you have this, it doesn't say anything about it, which I think might be a shock once people get their annual letter saying it's time, we're going to come by. You must give us your letter saying it's been inspected. It's just a lack of a lot of information. And maybe it's not supposed to be in there. I don't know. I just find it very disconcerting that we don't state things.
Motion to approve ordinance 11-22.
Second.
Okay, call the roll, please.
Mr. Frankel?
Yes.
Ms. Cassell?
Yes.
Mr. Boalston?
Yes.
Ms. Johnson?
No.
Mayor Petolia?
Yes. Okay, moving on to comments and inquiries and non-genue item, we'll start with the city manager.
Best wishes for a happy Juneteenth as well as a happy Father's Day.
Yeah, happy Father's Day.
Thank you.
Happy Father's Day, Ron.
Thank you.
All right, city attorney?
I think I've spoken enough for tonight.
Sorry, I couldn't hear you.
Exactly.
And to the commission, who wants to start?
I'll go quick.
Okay, go right ahead.
First, I'd like to recognize Sam and everyone at Parks and Rec. I walked through the Pride Fest through the rain. And everyone was having fun. The DJ was at the intersection. I saw some of the members of your team just a little bit north of the intersection with their little booth and just, you know, big kudos and bringing and including a great member of people to our city for that. I brought it up earlier and I want to see what you all think. We're getting PowerPoints that are being presented, but we're never seeing them until they're being presented. Back in the day.
We used to get them.
We used to get them.
Yes, we did.
So is there any, like, preference on when we can set a deadline or? I mean, I think they should go out when the agenda goes out, if possible. But I also recognize city staff sometimes has to wait, but the applicants aren't bringing them either. So what would you guys, what's your appetite?
We need to see them, I agree.
I'll take that as appropriate direction because I think that's a fair approach. It would be a little bit more organization that we would have to facilitate amongst executive leadership team members. But I think that's reasonable, so we will begin the process of making that happen.
Right, and last, I wanted to bring it up earlier, Shirley, but we really ran out of time with workshop. But your comments about cleanliness, I totally agree with. I have my little routine in the morning. So my routine in the morning is I usually go to eight o'clock CrossFit. So I usually drive down Second Avenue to Lake Ida Road. And I always see some members of our community walking to the beverage store, picking up a certain kind of beverage. I see just things not getting better, whether they be receptacles or whatnot. I think some of the information we got from Sammy a few weeks ago regarding, well, they're only cleaning up certain days and not all days, that has a huge impact. So I guess that's something not for tonight because we're all tired. But, and I'm starting to sound like Lynn. But, you know, I think that really during budget time, whatever resources we need, we need seven days. Go ahead, I'm sorry.
And that's part of the mix. I'll be meeting with you all individually, not to mention as a group in terms of specific considerations. Also striking a balance with the community redevelopment agency as well.
I think that's great and I just wanted to thank you, Ms. Johnson, for bringing that up, brother. Good night.
Getting to sound like a broken record, but I just will keep writing and writing.
I think you are absolutely correct.
Such a process.
I said, I think I brought that up, but anyway, go ahead.
You're both amazing.
All of us, all of us.
It's a common thread. Commissioner Cassell?
Yeah, I would also thank Sam. And then they went, they went from the ribbon cutting to the Pride Festival, to the concert, and always with a smile, your department is amazing, like all the other departments in the city. Everybody, thank you. But question about code enforcement. When we have an individual who is justifying, and I'm not assuming that's accurate, but if what the gentleman said here, Mr. Quillen, this evening, if Beach Dog is in fact boarding at night, what, can we talk about ways to manage beyond code enforcement when we have somebody who is not compliant? And I don't need to do it tonight, I'm just saying, could we think about it?
I mean, we can go to court and seek conjunctive relief. That's timely. Commissioner Frankel's laughing because he knows how the court system is. But I mean, at the end of the day, you know, we're limited, right?
So can we go, we gave her use based on our arrangement. Can we go back and withdraw that use right now if she's in fact violating?
No. We can, we can cite her for violating the conditions of her approval. But we cannot, and that's always the rub with these conditional uses. Once you give it, it's almost impossible to take away.
Okay, so, so is this the meeting after or not?
No.
Okay.
Feels like it.
And I called you and I.
You did.
Called you the day after and I said, you know, I have a bad feeling. I feel like we should have made it a conditional use that we could actually, if there's any violations, that we could withdraw, but you said we couldn't do that anyway.
No. Could have reconsidered it, I guess, if you had that information available to you at that time.
But it seems very, it seems like, why, how can we not have a means by which to enforce?
We do. It's code enforcement and it's a violation of the conditions of approval that, in my opinion, would go before the special magistrate within 24 hours so that we can make a statement.
Okay.
But again, these are allegations, right?
No, no, and I, I'm saying that.
Agreed, agreed.
So we have to be mindful of that.
But there was a very interesting comment by the, because I had the same thing on my list to talk with you about. There was a very interesting comment. Do we even call you? We were told that we couldn't report these things because it was, so is that open now for the community to be able to call in and report to the police or call in and make a?
I don't know where this whole, there's no noise ordinance thing is coming from. We have a noise ordinance. Is it challenging to enforce? Yes, candidly, it is.
No, I think that when they were going through this process, they were told by whoever, the police, the code enforcement, that they were not going to respond to any more noise complaints on that particular, you know, business because it was already in the process.
She was going through the process of an approval.
Madam Mayor, if I could, again, Sam Walther, Neighborhood and Community Services, we are currently doing night inspections.
Okay.
And we have not observed a violation yet. But we are picking different points in time during the night to do inspections because we have gotten a couple of complaints about the location. So we're doing that now. And if we discover that they are boarding overnight beyond the hours that they were approved for, we will violate them and bring them before the special magistrate.
I know that she, he said 5:30 in the morning. Obviously, that's a night border, obviously.
Yes, yes.
Because you're not supposed to be getting them before seven or something to that effect. Yes, did you have a same question?
How can they even take advantage of the conditional use without, didn't they have to make all these types of building improvements as part?
That was part of it.
To even take advantage of that? Have they done that already?
I had spoken to Mr. Costello and he, my concern was the outdoor use at the time. And so he confirmed to me that the outdoor equipment was removed.
Right.
And so you're right, technically, they shouldn't be operating, I forget what the approval was. It was.
It was definitely building requirements.
No, no, they had to go before the sprab, I believe.
Has that happened?
No.
Well, then they can't take advantage of the conditional use because that's not.
Remember, they have the zoning certificate of use, so they could take advantage of that. So that may not, and I don't have the information in front of me. I can email you tomorrow with more specifics. But they do have a valid zoning certificate of use. It was that they exceeded that and that's why they needed the conditional use.
Okay. All right, well, yeah, I would like to learn.
This is another example as to why we should understand what we're voting for and don't, don't.
I understand.
Don't, I thought I did too and I hope I voted in the right way.
We can't control what other people do.
I'm sorry.
We can't control what other people do if they're going to thumb their nose at what the approval is.
You don't know that that's going to happen. You have to expect that they're not going to do that. You're going to follow the rules, absolutely.
It was obvious.
Commissioner Cassell, you want to continue?
I do. So just, I wanted to ask Mr. Moore, are we moving forward with the process of recycling fully on the beach so that we qualify for the blue flag program?
As a function of that process, we'll be having an update coming to you all within the next couple of meetings or so relative to that matter.
Great, and then here's one other question I have, and forgive me. Is the function of purchasing in the finance department?
Yes, it is.
No, no, I know that it is.
I apologize.
No, no, it's fine. A good situation, you've tried it for a period of time. I think Mr. Dunkley is an amazing addition to the city. But previously, we had a director and that was its own individual department. And here's why I ask. I was trying to figure out why something was slowed down and, you know, the question was, well, things are in purchasing. I think purchasing is one of the biggest elements that keeps things moving in our city. And your department is critically important, finance, we're in budgeting right now. I'm not, this is no offense to you, I'm just asking if consolidating the two departments is the best way to keep us moving quickly. Anthea's department, you know, she's got money in the building aspect of her department and she could use consultants and lots of them. But that would require going out for a process. And what I'm trying to ascertain is, are we moving as quickly as possible? And does purchasing consolidated in finance make the best sense in retrospect?
It does.
Okay.
We'll continue to demonstrate that as time progresses. This was a recent adjustment, of course.
Right.
And quite frankly, it's also consistent with the marketplace. So you visit or benchmark with other municipalities throughout South Florida, throughout the country, quite frankly, that's a very common practice. If we were a much larger municipal organization, thousands of employees, much larger operation, then there may be some merit to have it as a separate function. Otherwise, the answer to the question succinctly, yes. And we'll be able to continue to demonstrate that as time progresses.
Okay, because I know what you're saying, but also, you know, bigger organizations also have better technology and they don't have the boxes of files in their, you know, permitting department that are months old. And we have some slowdowns, not relevant to you, certainly, not relevant to anything that our staff isn't doing amazingly well. I know Mr. Stacy is trying to get us on the right track to get our department, you know, all fully electronic. But until then, I think we need to figure out how all the other departments can come together and help that department be more efficient. And I'm just curious if separating out purchasing does that. If you say it does, okay.
It does.
But I hope things are moving along quickly. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
All right, thank you. Final comment. Commissioner Johnson?
Thank you very much, Mayor. I, first of all, would like to thank the city staff for all the wonderful things you do. I know I beat up on people sometimes and I don't come back and give kudos when they are due as much as I probably should. First of all, to Mr. Metalk, I beat up on you the most, Sam, because I think you've got the biggest responsibility in this city. My pet peeve, Old School Square Garage, you and I are going to have to have another little golf cart ride. The trash cans, the trash cans in the park have been changed. I'm sorry? You're saying something?
The garage or the park?
The Old School Square Garage.
That's the wrong person.
Missy.
That's the wrong person.
Well, then, Mr. Sam gave me a ride around and told me that this was the best, cleanest garage in his opinion. Nobody told me it was Missy.
Well, there's Parks and Rec and.
So you took the hit for her? Then the three of us are going to have this ride and whoever's responsible is going to hear my hour because it has gotten worse. And I commend you for cleaning up the garbage cans in the park. I hope they're going to be the answer to the problems that I foresaw. There's a trash can at the corner of our building here that goes into the Neighborhood Services Department. It was really ripe the other day. So I don't know who's responsible for it, but I would hope that we would do something about it with the heat and everything. I don't know how often it gets changed. I don't know whatever. Put a perfume balm in there or something because it wasn't very pleasant. With that, Sam, you did a great job with the playground dedication at Barwick Park. You've done others that I haven't attended. The children of this city will thank you. The adults who are brave enough to get up there and slide down that tunnel sliding board will appreciate it also. And Stan, some gentleman got in it and they heard him screaming and they thought someone was injured. But he was having such a good time going down the slide that he was just returning to his childhood, I suppose.
It was Mr. Boalston.
It was Mr. Boalston. Mr. Boalston. Maybe that's how we're going to relieve our attention, Mr. Boalston. You and I will slide down it together.
Can I watch it? Can I watch it? I'll take the photos.
I love that, I love that.
All those videos?
Yes, it would be nice. We can show it on the screen, give the city a hoot. Can, um, my two comments quickly, can we consider removing this setup for anti-COVID prevention? It is not.
No, I wanna keep it up.
You wanna keep it? I cannot see anybody over there, not that it's important, I suppose. Um, okay, thank you. Could we all maybe wear masks? I'd rather wear the mask and remove this. I don't know. Number two, history will be made on June the eighteenth, when we fill our jars with the soil collected near where we believe Mr. San, Samuel Nelson lost his life with no justice or accountability, accountability since nineteen twenty-six to today, twenty twenty-two. All lives matter. Mr. Nelson's, for some unknown, unexplained reasons, did not. We will gather on Saturday at ten-thirty at Pompe Park to memorialize Mr. Nelson. I personally invite everyone here, and in the sound of my voice of the recording, to come and to help heal the wounds opened by his lynching, September twenty-six, nineteen twenty-six. Thank you, Mayor.
All right, thank you very much. Commissioner Boalston?
Yes, I'm ho, really hoping these three things will be very quick. Um, Mayor, you, you had, you had brought up an issue in regards to chain link fence.
Yeah.
Something that I had brought up when I was on the DDA in regards to events coming in our town.
It's on my list too. You guys are taking care of everything I'm gonna be speaking about.
So, oh, we're good, so maybe we're saving some time here. Um, I was in a meeting with the, with the DDA and, uh, in regards to July fourth, and that's why I have to bring this up tonight. It's right around the corner. I would absolutely agree, it's not only is it unsightly, I would agree in some situations, it's unsafe, uh, where you could use lower barricades that if, God forbid, there was an emergency, people would not be trapped behind six or eight-foot chain link fences. Um, I think that is something that we should absolutely address.
I agree. I think that we need to talk about that with legal, but I think that, um, there, we have proven over and over again that when you do have beverages and you're in an area, as long as you have some sort of a barricade, uh, people tend to not, they won't cross over. Um, I, I think that, uh, we should, we should look at that, uh, more, and I agree with you a hundred percent.
Seen the, we, we've done the white picket fence for a few events, and, uh, the French barricades, and.
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
Okay. Or bollards, or planters, or, you know, things that basically kind of delineate people don't cross, that they know that they have to go in a different way, or whatever.
I know that everybody here wanted a little bit more time with the, uh, Pride Crosswalk dedication. Um, I don't know if that could be put on the next, the next agenda for reconsideration.
I, I wanna speak first, I don't wanna put, I'm not gonna make a commitment, because we haven't even had a chance. You just came in today, I haven't had a chance to talk about it.
It's only been a week, and, and our city attorney's been out, so if that's the answer, that's fine. I'll, I'll bring it up next meeting. Um, a few years ago, I, I did, um, I did not get consensus, um, to move forward with, um, making Juneteenth a, um, a holiday, um, here, citywide, as an organization. I, I said it was important then, I still think it's important now. I know the commitment of, you know, giving up that one day, but it is a, um, it's a, it's a strong, um, stance, you know, that we're taking on that topic, and, uh, and I think it says a lot about our city, not only to our, um, employees, but also to our community and the surrounding communities.
Something I may add, if I may, um, the courts are closed on Monday. I don't recall, Lynn, I don't ever recall the courts being closed.
It became a federal holiday as of twenty twenty-one.
That's probably why I don't recall.
So it's recently a federal holiday. Juneteenth, if I may, ladies and gentlemen, is the latest holiday since King Holiday became a national holiday. So, and this is only a year ago, so very well knew, and therefore, I'll be happy to all for goodness.
I attempted to, I put it forward in two thousand and eighteen, um, and I would like to revisit that.
What was interesting is, I think it was, I wanna say it was, uh, DeJesus that was in position when you had asked for that, and I think that there was a reason why we couldn't grant it, and it had to do with the number of days already being given off, so I, I would just re, recommend that you look at that. I think it was a, a question as to whether or not it was, you, you gotta trade one, you couldn't take another off because of some reason, and don't ask me what that was.
And the difference this time around is, as of one year ago, it became a federal holiday, twenty nineteen prior, twenty eighteen, et cetera, it was not. It does make a difference in terms of municipalities and organizations recognizing accordingly and striking a balance, and therefore, with support from the commission, I'll be more than happy to investigate considerations, and I think I have that.
I'm very much supportive of.
Anything else?
That's it.
Can I just, Mayor, can I say one thing quick about the memorial? I talked to Rand, and I also talked to Nick Capola. It's a very sensitive issue, but I'm, I just wanna, I'm gonna say, because I don't, I don't know that we should reconsider it, but, um, I wanna just say this. My hesitation is, some child goes, kid, and makes a mistake and does a donut across that, it's automatically a hate crime. Potentially, they serve a year in jail, and they have a felony record. Ryan, a felony record can destroy someone's entire future in a second like that. We have to make room for the fact that people make mistakes, and that kids do stupid things, and they do. There are laws, over one thousand dollars worth of damage to property is like a third-degree misdemeanor or something, it's, isn't, isn't, what's over one thousand, one thousand dollars worth of damage? It, it's in the Florida statutes. Right? So it, they, we don't need to, we can let the courts determine who did it with bad intent and has history, and who made a mistake, but once you make it a monument, it's sort of a, a foregone conclusion.
You can remove the, that, if, if you'd like, if, if we, uh, rediscuss it, and when we discuss it again, um, we can remove the dedication to the individual, and that would clear up your issue of it immediately being.
It still makes it a monument. So you just wanna put a plaque on the road?
No, I would, I would, I would like to make a, a, a permanent dedication so that it's permanent. You made the point of, well, future commissions might want.
I concern myself with, uh, you know, locking in something for all eternity, and the cost and the expense.
Can we have that conversation?
Yeah, we can do it another time.
For this long, and I, I haven't even gotten a chance to even say anything.
That's all I asked for.
Okay, so real quick, I just wanted to say, um, happy Fourth of July, because I don't know that we're meeting before that either, and I know that we got the Juneteenth then, and, and, and Father's Day, so just happy Fourth of July, and unfortunately, I